This is the June 1st, 2022 meeting of the Planning Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is an extension of a performance bond period for Map of Winters Estates in St. James. The applicant requests an extension of the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision number 1183, Map of Winters Estates. The final subdivision, number 1183, Map of Winters Estates, received conditional final approval for a three lot subdivision from the Planning Board on June 12th, 2019. Performance bond estimate in the amount of $62,784 was approved by the Planning Board. The performance period of the performance bond expired on October 8th, 2021. The applicant has indicated they need more time in order to complete the public improvements for the subdivision. The Planning Department and the Engineering Department have no objection to the request. The Highway and Traffic Safety Departments have not provided comments. The Planning Department recommends an extension period of two years. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number 2022, Extension of Performance Period of the Performance Bond for Number 1183, Map of Winters Estates. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Phil de Blasio to extend the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Number 1183, Map of Winters Estates, now therefore be first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive two-year extension of time to the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Number 1183, Map of Winters Estates, to expire on October 8th, 2023.
Thank you. Is the affidavit?
I don't have an affidavit. Is the applicant here?
No.
Guess not.
No?
We don't have an affidavit posting, then.
And no affidavit? Okay. Should we adjourn this?
You may want to wait till the end of the meeting, see if they show up.
Do you want to put this, we'll put this back on the end and we can just, at that time adjourn it if we have to.
Yep.
Okay.
So it was Phil de Blasio, wasn't it?
It's not Tramco?
It's Phil de Blasio. Yeah, I put Tramco. It's really Phil.
Okay, then go to the next matter, which is the map, the matter of Map of Foxhut Estates, which we have a letter from the attorney stating that he would like to have that adjourned, so we're going to adjourn that tonight. In the matter of Number 1146, Map of Foxhut Estates, a move that we adjourn the hearing to the June 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Planning Board.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion is adopted.
22nd.
Yes, that would be the June 22nd meeting.
The next item is a 288 application on Marshant Drive. The applicant is requesting approval to construct a road on an unimproved filed plat street known as Marshant Drive in order to provide access to seven proposed single-family homes. Although the plan depicts seven single-family homes along the proposed road, this application's primary focus is on the road and adequacy of infrastructure to these homes. Approval of the homes are subject to the zoning ordinance, building permit review process, and the Suffolk County Health Department regulations. Pursuant to Section 288 of Town Law, no permit for the erection of any building shall be issued unless a street or highway giving access to such proposed structure has been duly placed on the official map or plan. Additionally, before such permit shall be issued, such street or highway shall have been suitably improved to the satisfaction of the Town Board or Planning Board. In this case, it is the Smithtown Planning Board. The paper street known as Marshant Drive has a 50-foot wide right-of-way that is part of the filed map known as Smith Manor. The applicant is requesting to improve the paper street with a 30-foot wide road approximately 368 feet in length. The road will terminate with a temporary P-shaped turnaround with a pavement radius of 40 feet. The proposed road will not connect to the existing improved portion of Marshant Drive found south of the site. The applicant is proposing to construct a berm with evergreen trees along the southern portion of the turnaround. The Planning Department has no objection to installing a berm with evergreen trees across a town right-of-way, however it may be removed in the future at the discretion of the Town of Smithtown. At the request of the Town Engineering Department, the drainage for the new road will connect to the existing town recharge basin to the north. The applicant is proposing to dedicate the road to the Town of Smithtown after completion of construction. The applicant is also proposing to dedicate to the town two 86-square-foot parcels at the intersection of Marshant Drive and Browning Street. They are located on the northeast corner of Suffolk County Tax Map Number 10534 and the northwest corner of 10911. The applicant has indicated the Suffolk County Water Authority will provide service to the new dwellings. The topography of the site is relatively flat, ranging from 116 feet to 118 feet above sea level. There are no steep slopes, high groundwater, or wetlands on the site. The Departments of Planning, Engineering, and Highway have found the application acceptable. The Traffic Safety Department has provided the following comments. One, the existing intersection of Browning Street and Marshant Drive will need to be resigned for a controlling or all-way stop, and the existing warning signs for the existing bend in the roadway will need to be removed. Two, a dead-end sign will be needed to be added. Three, new street name signs will need to be added. And four, additional street lighting will need to be added along the proposed Marshant Drive. Additional information, the amount of the performance bond is estimated at $143,155. Two, the amount of the cash deposit is $3,500. Three, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town is $139,655. Four, the amount of the inspection fee is $11,452. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Island Preservation Project LLC for a 288 application to construct a road within an unimproved filed plat street known as Marshant Drive, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the 288 application on Marshant Drive, subject to the following conditions. A, posting of a performance bond in form and amount specified by a separate resolution of the Planning Board and for a term of two years. B, posting of a general liability insurance policy to run concurrently with the term of the performance bond, and in accordance with other provisions of Section 248 of the Code of the Town of Smithtown. C, payment of an inspection fee and cash deposit as established by a separate resolution of the Planning Board. D, a road opening permit shall be obtained from the Highway Department prior to any construction activity. E, the applicant shall contact the Engineering Department prior to any construction activity. F, the applicant shall contact the Traffic Safety Department for placement of traffic controlling devices and signage prior to any construction activity. And G, approval of this application is not an approval or an endorsement to construct the single-family dwellings depicted on the 288 map dated March 20th, 2022. Second resolve, that this approval of this 288 application shall be valid for a period of 180 days unless a performance bond has been posted with the Town Board in satisfactory amount. The applicant can request an extension of approval from the Planning Board. Then the next resolution, whereas the Town Departments of Engineering, Traffic Safety, Highway, and Planning have prepared a performance bond estimate to cover the cost of all public improvements, now therefore be it first resolved that the Chairman of the Planning Board is authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for the 288 application, Marshant Drive, in the amount of $143,155, and establish an inspection fee of $11,452 and a cash deposit of $3,500. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town shall be $139,655.
Thank you, ma'am. The affidavit of posting in order?
It's good.
It's good?
Good.
Okay. Is there anyone representing the applicant? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Thomas.
Kramer, Principal Firm of Kramer Consulting Group with office at 54 North Country Road Mill Place. Madam Chairman, I'm glad to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions right at this moment? Would you be available?
I'll be available, yes. Yeah, I mean, the planner did an excellent job summarizing what we have here, and I just want to point out that this is only for a road opening, it's not for the houses. That those would be, those are separate, those are, were separate applications to be built. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter? If so, please come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
George Crivosta, K-R-I-V-O-S-T-A, 3750 Acre Road South. These proposed houses will be out my back door. What bothers me is, yes, this is an answer to build a road, but nobody builds a road that goes nowhere. They're clearly intent on, on building those houses eventually once they get the approval. Now, what happens is, this road is also very narrow, and all it's going to do is contribute more traffic onto a road that has become exceptionally dangerous to begin with, right? When that new development, which is not new anymore, it's 30 years old, to the north of my, when they approved 38 houses on 19 acres, that opened up the entire north end coming down 50 Acre Road South. And now, you're going to add seven more houses, 14 more cars minimum, going up and down. We don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Again, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Robert Antonelli. I live at 20 Shetland Lane, right down the block from the proposed new road. With all due respect, Suffolk County is turning into Queens. They're developing every square inch of wildlife, trees, bushes. It's like, when does it end? That's all I need to know, is like, we have foxes out of the woods over there. We have deer, and all kinds of stuff you don't normally see. I moved from county, which turned into Queens, and we came out here about 15 years ago, and we absolutely love it. Suffolk County is beautiful, and we'd like to keep it beautiful, but it breaks my heart just seeing that sign that only went up a few days ago. I don't know what the rule is on that, but we really, nobody had enough time to like, get enough people from the area to come down. That's besides the point. You all live in Suffolk County. You all know what I'm talking about. Come out south, left. It's, take me up.
Take me 20 minutes, make a left on Jericho Turnpike. It's ridiculous. It's just, nothing against you people. Everybody here, I'm sure, is very nice, but when's enough enough? Like, when we lose all the trees and all the birds and the deer and, when does it end? I mean, is this necessary? Like the gentleman said, we have 38 houses that went up 30 years ago. There's so little amount of forest and woods and trees left. That'll be gone, because once they get that road, and they get the seven houses, you have the whole rest of Marshant, which is all wooded area. That's all going to be gone. And then you know what? Maybe they'll put a subway in. Who knows? You know what I'm saying? Like, I don't, enough is enough. I mean, you all live here. You all, you know what I'm talking about. It's, we're losing Suffolk County. We're losing our trees. This is why we live here. When does it end? That's my only question. When does it end? When does it stop? When does somebody actually say, hey, you know what? Let's just leave this group of trees, or let's just leave this little bit of forest and let the little rabbits run around and let people that live here enjoy it? More cars, more traffic, more people, more nonsense? For what? So somebody can make a ton of money on seven houses that are going to be overpriced anyway? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. That's what we are.
If you can just fix that mic and speak into that mic and state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Melissa Stensel. I live on 4 Browning Street. I am pretty concerned about the level of traffic and the way cars really use 50 Acre South and Browning and Marshant as a cut-through. You know, I'm concerned with my oldest. It has the bus stop for Nessaquake right at the corner of Browning and 50 Acre. I've seen cars blaze through and pass, I don't know, what's wrong? Pass through the school buses while my son's waiting at the corner to catch it in the morning. My younger two, the school bus comes for Dogwood at my house, and I, I see cars through these, these two streets. I do not feel comfortable with my children playing outside in the front yard unsupervised. You know, I think it's doing a huge disservice to them. I have extreme concerns about that, just for my own children's safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Mulvey. I live on 4150 Acre Road South. I've lived there about 50 years. We're going to have houses behind our house built, those seven houses. And 50 Acre Road has turned into a cut-through for this whole community. And the cars that are going down 50 Acre Road travel at excess speeds when we have about 30 kids on the street who are waiting for school buses. Next thing is that Marshant is a dead end here, and instead of continuing Marshant and taking some of the strain off 50 Acre Road South, they're, they're proposing to stop and leave the dead end there and not continue Marshant right through. Now, I don't see a reason for that, and maybe you could state one, explain it to me. Marshant is the road that they're, it's right over here. It's a dead end, and they're going to continue it right north to Browning. But why isn't it going straight through? Marshant could go straight through to the dead end part and right on to Middle Country Road, and take, alleviate a lot of the problems that we have since we have so many kids waiting for school buses on 50 Acre Road South. And it's a danger to them because these cars travel, because it's a straight roadway, and the cars travel at 40, 50 miles an hour. And I don't see any reason for not opening up the dead end part of the street, just so the houses could be a little more private? Is that the only reason? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just come back to add to what the other speakers have said.
I will.
George Crivosta, 3750 Acre Road South. And don't offer me a traffic control device, like a stoplight at the corner, because all that's going to be is an even giant to funnel. Yes, the reason why they don't want that to go through? I can tell you why. I worked for county government for 45 years in the crime lab. I know all about how things work. Guess what? He won't be able to sell his $800,000 houses if all of a sudden all the traffic now goes down his block instead and goes into a commercial area that's down at the corner. So that's why he wants to send them to a residential area. No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Elizabeth Zito. I live at 8 Browning Street, directly across from where you posted that sign the other day. I have the same concerns as Mrs. Stensel. I have three children who catch the bus. It is a huge cut-through. People whip around that corner at speeds that you would not even believe. They come flying, flying around that corner. We do not need more traffic down our street. There are too many children who live in our neighborhood catching buses. We do not need more traffic. It was the same thing years ago when you tried to put condos up there. It's the same thing now. We don't need the traffic. We have too many kids to be concerned about. It's ridiculous as it is. They come flying around my corner at 40 miles an hour. It's insane. It's insane. No traffic signal, like, that you put up is going to stop them.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
My name is Margaret Mulvey, 4150 Acre Road South. We've been there 50 years, and right now, we have a hard time getting out of our driveway. We have to watch both ways, and sometimes it takes a few minutes to get out. Secondly, the Guard Dog Foundation is at the end of the street. People walk the dogs, and they're training people who are blind, vets. This is a concern. They, they will not have a, they need to have them walk on sidewalks to train them properly. Walk on a curb. We see them giving treats when the dog does the right thing. They're not going to be able to do that. I can't tell you how horrible the traffic is on our street, because Middle Country Road, all of St. James, I could, my husband and I go walking around the neighborhood, and I could pick out all the cars that come down our street to go to Middle Country Road, and then they take it back to go to their home in St. James. We are another Middle Country Road, but we're 50 Acre Road, but we're the same road, Middle Country Road, just an extension. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Chris Peterson. I'm at 3350 Acre Road South. Am I allowed to ask questions or just make statements?
You can make a statement.
Statements, no questions?
Oh, you can ask anything you like.
Okay.
We can help you?
Please. I appreciate that. Just looking at all the houses on that, that side of the diagram there, is there any buffer that would go into play between the proposed road slash homes and the existing homes that are there?
Mr. Colado?
No buffers. There's setbacks for homes and single-family zoning, but that's pretty much it.
Okay, so because it's residential to residential, it would pretty much be that could build up to the back of any of the properties that are existing there?
Uh, no. In R10, you need a 50-foot rear yard, so the house would have to be 50 feet from the rear property lines.
Gotcha. So the property line could be back-to-back, but the home itself would have to be at least 50 feet from it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, one of the things that appealed to me, it's going to be 10 years when we moved into the helm, is having the, the beautiful wildlife that that gentleman had mentioned. Really, really nice waking up in the morning, looking where the sun sets coming up, seeing the animals. We've got deer. We've got rabbits. We've got a fox. Definitely concerned that all of that could be wiped out through the proposed changes. I think people made a lot of great concerns about the traffic, so I definitely feel those concerns as well. I don't want to repeat all of them for you guys. And it just looks like, as though, like, that would look really nice to move to one of those seven proposed, well, the road soon to be homes. I just think about, like, we're the people that are living here now, and I want to prioritize the people that are living here now more so than the seven that could presumably live here in X amount of years. Minimum of seven. And also, I mean, I just, I'm curious how this fits into the, if we go east of that picture, to the right of that picture, that's where the car max, is that definitely going in there?
I believe so.
Okay. Yeah, they have to get site plan approval. It's not approved.
Okay, so just a lot of those changes. I mean, I know it was a cement factory, and thank goodness it's not an apartment building, but I just want to try and hold on to the bit that we have there, knowing that it will back up to a car max probably at some point, just to preserve what we have for the folks that live here currently. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Colleen Muzia, 6 Samus Street. So I'm off of M U Z I A. I'm a new resident to the neighborhood. We moved here about a year ago. We moved from Nassau County also, like that gentleman. We moved here for the quiet neighborhood. We were moving away from the Nassau County traffic, the congestion. We moved to an area where there was a wooded space. My children enjoy seeing the turkeys that walk across their lawn, the deer that walk across their lawn, the hawks. I'm afraid of the construction site for my children. As said before, the traffic, my children and I were walking just the other day up 50 Acre South, turned on to Browning. We were almost hit by a car because there's limited space. I'm concerned about that. Cars are whipping around the corners going from March to Samus, Marchant to Browning. If we add a through street, or at least to this dead end, you have cars going from Marchant straight through without stopping, and I'm sure there would be stop signs, whatever, but you know what? I'm living off 50 Acre also. Cars don't stop at stop signs. Yes, I'm concerned about the traffic, the construction, the change of the wildlife, the scenery here. You know, we moved to this area again, Smithtown. We're really excited to just be further away from the city congestion and to see it all just kind of whittle away because we need more space for homes. I, I kind of disagree there. I think it's beautiful the way it is, and I'm sure as residents and board members you can agree with that, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, I made, I made some notes, and I just want to mention to the Board that we are proposing a natural area to the south on the one lot. All the homes, well, I guess, as a result of development, there will be no further, no other houses can fit in there. So it'd be the seven, now be it. There is a dedication or a, not a dedication, but a covenant area on the larger lot to the south on the, that would be the west side of the road, Marshant. So that would be preserved natural. The one to the, there's another parcel to the south that is currently vacant. That's owned by somebody else. We have no control over that. There, there was a mention about the setback to the houses. Although there is no required covenant, there's no required buffer, we are not clearing up to the property lines. The property lines, we're proposing clearing to about 20, 40 feet on between the houses and the lot to this, further to the west. So we're only clearing parts of it. Minimum amount of clearing necessary for each lot. Essentially, people like the, like to remain natural as much as possible. I should also point out that the lots, the zoning for the particular area would allow smaller lots than what we're proposing. Again, once this is approved by the Health Department and by this Board for the individual lots, it can't be further subdivided. There's not enough room to, to meet the setback standards. The traffic, we're always faced with traffic. This is the minimum amount of lots that are coming into the area. We don't have the ability to, to preserve the entire area. If somebody wanted to buy the entire area and preserve it, if the town wanted to buy it, I'm sure my clients would, wouldn't object to that. But they have a right to do something with the property, and what they're doing with it is something that's a minor, a minor impact to the community. There are, we are, we will put in the stop signs as required by Traffic Safety and all the other signs that are required. People may not, may not address stop signs, may not stop at them completely, but they are a, especially all-way stops are, are a deterrent to people. And that's something that doesn't exist right now, and that's what we'd be proposing. And dead-end signs, it will be coming in from the, we are not showing, going down all the way into Marchant. The southern is substandard. We don't have the ability to, to address that. There is a, it's all commercial to the south. It would be allowing commercial to come back in. It was cut off. We did offer to extend it down all the way to include that, the existing house that's on the northern part of Marchant that's coming up. The property owner did not want that. He wants to remain to go out between, in the commercial areas. So we shortened it up, and so the road is essentially stopping at his northern property line. So, so it is the minor amount of road that's being constructed. It's the minimum number of houses that can be built on the site based on zoning and the Health Department regulations. And if the Board has any other questions, I'm glad to try to answer them. I think I covered pretty much what people brought up. Again, lots could be smaller, and we are allowing, we are not clearing entirely up to the property line, even though there are no required buffers.
Does the Board have any questions?
Um, just one. Why, well, you were saying that
well, you were saying that the reason you didn't push through all the way on Marchant is because the resident, that's the existing resident, asked you not to with any other reasons?
Well, the southern part is substandard, the road itself.
Okay, so yeah, to go through to Jericho, that road...
To go through to Jericho, it's really too narrow to get through. It serves basically as a driveway for the commercial facilities that are down there and to the person to the north. We didn't extend... originally, the concept was to include that single-family residence in the subdivision. He objected to it. He didn't want to come out onto... he didn't want to come out and wrap around, so we moved it up to his northern property line. That was it.
Okay. Thank you.
It's okay. Anybody else?
Excuse me, sir. Are you going to... did you have a question for the... this gentleman?
Oh, yes, okay.
But can you wait, and then when he's finished, and you can address the board at the microphone?
Okay, that's it. If the board has no more questions, thank you.
All right, so we'll just... we have another...
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ken Movee, 4150 Acre Road South. When we moved into that area, behind the area, north of the cement factory, Smithtown used to use that as a town dump. Now, has that been changed? I mean, the soil is contaminated. Has the Health Department come and stated that this is safe to build homes in that whole area, since it was a dump for the town of Smithtown?
I believe that...
We were told at the time, because at that time, we had well water, and they told us we could not use the well that we had at our house, because the soil was contaminated. And we're on 50 Acre Road South. Town of Smithtown had to dump behind that area, and we don't know what was dumped into that area, as far as the health concerns, but I was told, do not drink the water from the well that we had in our house at the time. We were attached to city water already, but they told us we could not use that water because of contamination from the dump that existed there.
I believe that that was addressed when the application was made for the CarMax.
Well, how could that be...
And we might have something that Mr. Colado might have on record, or if you can recall, that a study was made at that time when CarMax was...
I'm not familiar, too familiar with the CarMax application. Another planner in the office worked on that, so I don't know of any studies that were done.
Well, what Smithtown answered to the fact that it was a dump and there's contamination in that area? Does Smithtown have an answer for it?
But there's any sort of leachy... I saw city with the town landfill. There's no reason why you're on Suffolk County water.
And also, that was addressed at the time of the application for CarMax. I was here at the time, and they did do a study, an environmental study, and everything was approved at that point, based on that study, as far as the groundwater and as far as whatever was dumped there. It was all addressed at that time.
But the dump ran from the cement factory north?
Yes. That was all addressed at that time when CarMax brought up their application.
And the result of contamination of soil was?
Well, they did get the approval by the Health Department to put in the CarMax, and I guess they tested the...
But now they're not talking CarMax. We're talking about homes built in that area.
They couldn't do anything. They wouldn't be able to do anything unless they had the approval of the Suffolk County Health Department, which they did have.
But Smithtown has approved it through that?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I just have a couple... sorry, Melissa Stensel for Browning Street, St. James. I just have a couple of questions. I know it was just mentioned that the homeowner on Marchant was consulted regarding where and how, like, the development of the road is going to be presented and how he wants to, you know, how he prefers to, like, leave and leave his house. How come no one else in the surrounding area, aside from that sign that just went up a couple of days ago, which I would not have noticed if it wasn't for my neighbor who texted me a picture of the sign, because it was very, you know... I thought it was done very shadowy, you know, and very sus... it was very suspicious to me that, you know, that sign went up, and the meeting is today, and no one was really consulted, you know? So I'm just curious as to why, you know, one homeowner was approached and, you know, spoken to about this development, but no one else was. And I just have a statement to make regarding the traffic. I really, 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 really... I'm really offended at the flippant attitude regarding, you know, his response to everybody's concerns about the influx of traffic, the amount of children that are living within these short, you know, few streets that and surrounding area of this new development. You know, I just really thought it was a very flippant response, and I really am very offended by it.
I can say one thing.
Sorry.
I can answer one of your questions. The affidavit posting was done in the proper manner, so they had the... they had to sign up with the amount of days that they needed prior to the meeting. As far as the street goes, I think Mr. Colado can help me on this one. To continue, it would be substandard just up to that point is where the road would be wide enough. And as far as, you know, I imagine you have a lot of concerns, but the property is owned by a person who has the right to make an application to have homes built there, just as all the other homes were built in Smithtown the same way. And each time, I understand your concern, but that he does have the right to build on that property. And maybe if Mr. Colado can just give a little more input on the street, why the street isn't going through?
Right, like the applicant said, it's substandard in size. I did mention it's a temporary turnaround. It could be connected at one day. It would have to be improved by the Highway Department to be up to standard.
And that last homeowner, it wasn't like, it's not his yea or nay to come on it, but...
Yeah, I think the applicant reached...
But him going out through the commercial, you know, but past the commercial, that's, you know, if he wants to go ahead and do that, it's one less car or cars.
Yeah, there's no requirement that the applicant reach out to neighbors. I guess they reach out to that one, because it was just south of their cul-de-sac, but that's their choice to reach out. You can't make them reach out to anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Colado.
But he could have been part of... they could have put the turnaround order P right past his access, and then he would be part of this subdivision.
Correct.
Right.
Right, which is probably the better way.
Yeah, and I, you know, like I said, I completely understand that, and I respect all of the responses and the work and all of that. You know, I just feel like we have our right to our concerns and our opinion and our voices and stuff, and just within the past nine years that I've moved here, it's been unreal, unreal, seeing how everybody, like, whips down the road, you know, with complete disregard for all of the children that are in the neighborhood, even, like, I know someone mentioned about the guide dogs walking down the streets. It's just, you know, it's just very concerning, and I just feel, my opinion, it was done very haphazardly.
Thank you. Thank you for your input and your comments. We appreciate it. Okay, maybe you have one last question?
George Cravasta, 3750 Acre Road South. I've taken up enough of your time, so I'm not going to go get up again after this one. But there comes a point where you become a little...
Can you... excuse me, sir? Can you...
I can speak very loudly.
Well, it's being recorded. What... the meeting... excuse me, sir, the meeting is being recorded. We have a...
You can take the microphone, won't you?
All right. Thank you for your cooperation, sir. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Now that you know what I'm going to be talking about, that is the plot that he says we decided to leave. He's being a little bit disingenuous. You want to know why? If they developed that plot, the person who had that house would have the guide dog's generator right out their back window, right? So there comes a time where you are fed information, but you're not fed the whole story. When they built the development, we've made mistakes before, right? When they put the 38 houses above us, right? What they didn't count on, and you have to go ride, walk 50 Acre Road South or drive it and go down that road, and you're in a downgrade like this when it turns like that. That is why we get all the traffic. Yes, if they were to punch 50 Acre South through to the other end, it would have turned us into Lake Avenue. This ain't all that much better, right? If you're going to build a road for houses, don't tell me the other road is substandard. If you can build one, you can build it all the way if you want to. He doesn't want to build it because he doesn't want traffic going past his $800,000 houses. He'd rather have it go through the people who are already there, who've been paying taxes for 50 years, 43 years, or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No more questions?
Anybody else?
Would you like to...
Making other statements, sir?
Yeah, just a few things that were brought up. Oh, Thomas Kramer, Principal Firm of Kramer Consulting Group, his office at 54 North Country Road, Miller Place.
Thank you, sir.
The... we are proposing water, public water, to be brought into the site. This is Suffolk County Water Authority, so it will all be hooked up to the... we're not using private wells. The existing house is an existing house that was built many, many years ago, and it came off of the southern part of the road, and that is substandard now. If you look, there, the buildings that are below there, you wouldn't be able to widen that road, because they're... the buildings are right up to the edge of it at this point. The sign was, as you mentioned, the sign was posted legally, according to the town code, and there was nothing to try to hide from... in fact, this road itself that we're talking about opening is a road that was originally approved in 1928, so it's been on the books. It's been a road, it's been a paper road since that time, and it's... we're just looking to open it in a reasonable manner without going all the way down through to a road that's substandard at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on with this. We allow one more question? Yes.
Colleen Muzia, 6 Samus Street, M-U-Z-I-A. It's actually a question. I might have missed this, because I did walk in a couple of minutes late. So I understand the proposal right now is just for the road, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the proposed houses that he has on the property were drawn out. Are those... is it definitely through... seven houses that would be established there eventually? Or could the road be put in and then maybe more houses or different types of homes put into the area? Just wondering.
It's zoned, single-family on a quarter acre, so he has to abide by the zoning. Health Department has their own regulations. They're more strict than the town. So it could be seven, it could be six, it could be eight. He's proposing seven. Like I said, the application is not reviewing the number of homes. It's not an approval of these homes on the map. It's really just the road and the infrastructure itself. The zoning, the, you know, building ordinance, the code, those type of things would regulate how many houses he could get.
Okay, so potentially and hypothetically, he could put the road in and then decide we want to put an apartment complex?
No, you'd have to do zone change.
It's not zoned for that. So it would only... again, I missed the beginning of this. I wanted to make sure that I have this correct. So max, maybe eight homes, max, depending on the size.
I couldn't give you the answer. It's not... it probably won't be eight, but like I said, it's probably going to look like what you see on the map.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thomas Kramer, Principal Firm of Kramer Consulting Group, his office at 54 North Country Road, Miller Place. There are only going to be seven houses. As Matt said, we... the Health Department is the controlling factor in this, as far as the number of houses that can come in. As I mentioned before, we could put in probably more, but we're only proposing the seven, and that's with the Health Department approval. In fact, we have to bring in another lot to come up to that point, one TDR into it. So there are only going to be seven houses. It's not going to be eight. It's not going to be an apartment complex or anything else. It's going to be the seven houses that we're proposing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, then, in the matter of 280A application, Marchant Drive, St. James, Suffolk County Tax Map, number 800-109-1-1, 4 and 5, and Suffolk County Tax Map, 800-105-3-32, 33, 34, I move that we close the hearing.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None, the hearing is closed. And in the matter of the 280A application approval for Marchant Drive, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None, the motion is adopted. And in the matter of the 280A application, Marchant Drive, I move that we approve the performance bond estimate as recommended by the Planning Department.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None, the motion is adopted. Thank you. And I also... Oh, yes. Again, is there an applicant here for the item number 1183, map of winter estates at St. James? And seeing that there isn't anyone here, Mr. Colado, should we just adjourn this, or should we...
Yeah, to the 22nd.
Okay, then I guess we will...
June 22nd.
We'll do that June 22nd, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so in the matter of number 1183, map of winter estates at St. James, I move that we adjourn the hearing to the June 22nd meeting of the Planning Board.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion is adopted. Thank you. And I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.